Today is October the 20th. The full council for median council members present are Councilman Valores, Councilman Gomez, Councilman Vereno, Councilman Castillo, and Mayor Cortez Flores. We'll come off tonight's meeting with a location given tonight by our very distinguished city attorney, Mr. Rosenberg.
I'm not about to extinguish the power here. Our father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather, to go about the public's business. We ask that we might be humble in our efforts to provide leadership. Help us to realize that as Moses, we all have an obligation to be patient. We all have an obligation to look for your leadership. We ask that you be with us tonight and give us the sense that we have a burning bush to be good leaders and to do you well. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Councilman, we're glad that you all have minutes from September 29th. Let's take a moment to review the minutes, make any changes that you see fit, and then let's entertain a motion for approval. Margaret, did you mark in today's minutes that today they're recorded that on the earthquake for our minutes just for historical purposes for archives? I believe that it was reported as a 4.6 quake. Just put it on our page. Who's asking, Margaret, put it on our page?
I'll send the USGS center. I sent that to several clients today located about halfway between Carrington City and 37.
Flashing, right?
Yes, in the flash area. And that was reported at 4.6 to 4.8, so it was a significant stuff in terms of physical activity. And we felt it at our house and bedroom.
Okay, we could put that in our archives?
May I approve the minutes of September 29th?
Motion to approve is presented. Is there a second? Motion by Castillo, second by Verena to approve is presented. All in favor say aye. All opposed? No? 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 Motion passes 401. No, abstains. Item 3A, presentation of award. On behalf of the Association of Hispanic Officials, we have the executive director of this association, Mr. Johnny Rodriguez. Whiz? Johnny?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council, believing staff, City of Florisville, good evening. My name is Johnny Gonzalez, and as Daniel said, I am the executive director of the Association of Hispanic Municipal Officials, which is our one. And basically what we are is a group of elected officials throughout the state of Texas that try to educate and promote general welfare, good welfare within our communities, to try to provide educational mediums so that we can bring them back home to our respective communities and utilize them in these communities. And Daniel serves as our president of the organization. He's been with us now for some time since '09, when he replaced our president back in with Mr. Frankis. And recently, what we do is we participate in all the annual conferences of your welfare where we've been there before, the TMLs. So what we do is provide these educational mediums and then we have a reception. And we focus a lot on the education. And we were out there in Houston this year, and we had it at the Joe Brown, I think it's the Joe Brown, what was it, Mayor?
George Brown.
George Brown Center, the convention center. And our topic of discussion this year was Eagle Ford Shell. And the reason we decided to speak about that was because of the direct impact on the communities such as Florisville, Carrizo, Pleasanton, all these cities on South Texas and the general area, regionally where the impact is being felt the most. So we felt we had a huge concentration of members that needed to be educated on the issue pertaining to the Ford Shell and what are the impacts, such as the economic development impacts, the housing industry, what kind of impacts it may have on the health industry as far as hospital systems, and everything that relates to their impact and their presence in here. So it was a wonderful event. We had Chesapeake Energy, we had Marathon Oil, pretty much all of the major energy and oil companies were there. And they were really, really grateful to us, and so were the participants of the session that we had, because the presentation not only covered energy and oil, it also covered water and some of the demands that we have with water resources and the lack of in some areas. So it was a really, really educational. I think Councilman Fronde was a participant, and he was there at the Eagle Ford Shell. He couldn't test, and it was a very good presentation. So we had a wonderful event there. And then every year, we select two individuals as award recipients for the Alex Presenio Award, which we created about three years ago. Alex Presenio was the former city manager under Henry Sisneto, and we decided to select him because of his leadership role, his testament to the education of being one of the members of St. Mary's University, and he's very active, also as chairman of the board of Sancho of the Water Systems. So what we did is we decided to utilize him as our award, as a namesake. So we awarded this year to Leodoro Martinez, who is the North Rio Grande Middle, what is it called, Danny, in the actual?
You see, you see the, in the valley?
Right, in the Araby Valley. And basically, they're dealing very, very heavily into the concentration of the Eagle Ford Shell. And then we also had Rudy Villarreal, who's the mayor and one of the founders of our who recently just retired, 30 years of service, became the mayor of the city of Alamo. So those were the two recipients. And then Danny, obviously our mayor here in Florisville, we decided to also distinguish him from his leadership role and to show that he has really led our organization. And it's been a pleasure to work with him all these years that we've worked together. We really have gotten along well, and we've been able to work towards very positive things, impact. And I will tell you that there's something that I found out about Danny that's kind of humorous to me. He never fails to punch a line in before, I mean, he can be talking about, they call him up at Eagle Ford Shell and they ask him to give a, you know, welcome and things. The first thing he said, and he put it part of his speech as to, you know, how it relates to it, but he always went Florisville. As it relates to his capital in Florisville, we have this in the housing industry, we have this as a direct result. And he would give a good example, and he kept punching up Florisville, Texas. And he does that every single time that we're at any work. And so he has been a very good promoter of your city to represent you and represent the council. People like Councilman Fronde, who's been there, is a great presence. Councilman Garretto's been there, Councilman Valores has been there, all the council members have been there. And we hope to see you, Councilman Castillo, all for the well in our future endeavor that we have. But Danny has always been the consummate advertiser and marketer for Florisville, Texas. And I think that's very good. Former mayor myself for the city of Valcom, science, as the former director of the Edwards Office for Authority, I was always out there punching, and I still am, even up to now, as you tell. But with that, I would like to say that we gave Danny this very, very beautiful award on behalf of the Association of Hispanic Municipal Officials for his efforts. And basically, it's this award here. It is called the Association of Hispanic Municipal Officials Annual Conference and Exhibition, October 11th through the 14th in Houston, Texas. Daniel Tejada, mayor of Florisville, Texas. And it says, "Amo President from 2009 to 2010." But I will tell you that he's done such a very, very good job that the board of directors have voted to keep him passed also his time, because he has been exemplary of his service. And so they voted to go ahead and keep him on for another four years if he wants to, and he continues to be with us, he's welcome with us. So Daniel, in recognition of your service as a leader and promoter of education and general welfare of our Hispanic community, I proudly want to present this to you as I did in Houston, in front of your city council and your city, to say thank you for your leadership role in our organization. I look forward to making more years working with you. Thank you. And friend and worthy member, honored friend. Thank you so much. So with that, I'll cut very shortly. The next thing we had was a recognition by the city of Houston, Texas. Ed Glusad, Houston city council member, presented us with a certificate of appreciation, and he presented it to Daniel, the president. And it was from the office of city council member, who is the mayor pro temp, council member District H. And it says, "The city of Houston recognizes the Association of Hispanic Municipal Officials as they hold their annual conference and exhibition in our city. Amo is dedicated to improving the quality of life of the Hispanic community and empowering Hispanic leaders. We wish you continued success and recognize their continued dedication to this effort." And with that, I'll just show you the certificate that we have from the city. And I will say that it is not only Hispanics that we try to educate, it is everyone. I have a little joke, and that is that we're non-denominational, we're colorblind, and we belong to Church of Good Nudar, which means that, you know, everyone is welcome in our organization. And we have had now members from all sorts of ethnic backgrounds joining us. And I think that's a great thing, because it's a testament to our hard work, Mayor. And so we want to invite you to join us if you're not renewing your memberships. And I have a special gift for you. Margaret, where are they at? Oh, here they are. I have a special gift for each council member and staff, and these are shirts that are printed with our logo and a little bitty lapel pin for the council members. So if I may, with all due respect, Councilman Fronde, they may be a little bit big, but these are the last ones we had. I'll order some other ones for you guys. And there's a membership brochure in there, if you guys want to consider us. But yeah, except this as a token of our brand. And this is the one I promised you, Councilmember, about a year ago. So far, we have it here. All right, there we go. And this is for staff here. This one is for Margaret. And I will tell you, Shelly, is it Shelly?
Sherry.
Sherry and Margaret and Andy have been a tremendous help to us during our times in conferences. There you go. That we have been in our functions throughout the state.
What about us?
Well, I'll tell you what, let me get your application. But they have been a tremendous resource for us, and Shelly is just great over at the Houston event. Thank you so much for your help. I couldn't have done it without you, Margaret, to be honest. So with all due respect, I will excuse myself to say thank you very, very much for your time, and I'm glad to be here. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Next, we're going to item 4, 4A. Mr. Russell, want to get some update on the cemetery?
Man, it's amazing. I was next to the last last night.
I was actually requested.
You're really a party here.
You know, they kept calling at the law's room to see if I was working or not. So that's why I'm here. But anyway, I noticed in the editorial page, buddy, that old Jim is about a quarter of a page.
Yes, sir.
Somebody touched the verb on that. Well, I read that thing bad. You got it bad. Anyway, I found the problem. He's an agony.
Oh, that's what they do.
That's what the problem is. Lou, like I said. Anyway, it took, it's been about five months since I hired this job, and I finally got 253 flags in the wall, and it took three and a half months on that. I mean, you talk about a budget of system management. Whoa! But anyway, I got them, and I got a little piece of pictures with you. The ladies volunteered to put them down, and I also want to use PVC pipes, you know, that's the best way to use a flag, you know, replacing stuff like that. No, I think, you know, I see some much good news, but I was very disappointed because during the hustle-bustle of the lead, the grass actually got waist-high to the older spots. And I really, I just, I don't know what the answer is, but a bunch of this stuff hasn't been done. The good news is that the cemetery today is mowed better than it ever has been mowed. So I think that's progress. I always want to stay positive, but I think we need to really make serious move along. I've got some pictures here of other cemeteries for about, you know, I gave you six last time, maybe 20 here, if they belong in the city council. And, you know, I think anybody who wants to run for mayor has been out the heat too long. Now, there's something else, too. I know we're to the left. Let's get it looking as good as possible, watering and everything. And I want to have all 250 of those flags, and there might be some leftover for some of these other cemeteries here, which I've got some pictures here of the one up by the soccer field and Hispanic Cemetery on 0181, so. And I'd like to estimate I have, unless there's any questions, y'all know how to reach it. I'll start over here.
Mr. Russell, again, thank you. Thank you, staff, all the work that you do at the cemetery on a volunteer basis, I might add. Mr. Russell, for those in the audience, it's the president of the Cemetery Association.
I got new variants on 11, huh?
Thank you so much, sir. When do we have planned for the 11?
What?
When do we have planned for the 11?
It's Saturday. So Mr. Daddy?
If I could be of assistance on anything, I'm off on that day, so please count on me for whatever we need.
We don't have a program planned for 11. I just, I want to get some stuff in the paper and encourage people to go out and see it and all that sort of thing. And, you know, it'd be nice, I've got an invitation to the African-American church over here to visit them, and I know the Hispanic people will get involved in these cemeteries too, the different ones. And so the big one will be Memorial Day, that's Monday and May, we'll be preparing.
We'll do something then.
Yeah. It's, I'll put the La Quinta deal in there, the very latest picture this way.
Mr. Russell, are these recent pictures?
Of what?
Are these recent pictures after the load?
Yes, yes. Actually, they're the last, probably the last two days.
I was out there, and it's looking very, very nice. As a matter of fact, my church is getting ready to have a service out there on November the 2nd.
On November 2nd?
Yes, November the 2nd. So your flags won't be out there by then, will they?
I hope so, yes.
Okay, good.
I've got the lead in the picture there, it's volunteer to put it in, no charge, and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Before we launch a new business, is there any citizens input that signed up?
No mayor, there is not.
Okay, we're going to new business. Item 5A, consideration and action to authorize the city manager to retain law office of Kaufman and Killen as attorneys for the 4A Corporation. Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Mayor, I've visited with the 4A board president, Bill Gleason, and he is in the audience tonight for any questions. We had been discussing the increased activity at our center, and I spoke to Lou, and Lou and I are going to be running and gunning this year on issues of annexation and the growth that we're encountering. So my recommendation is that we hire the offices of Kaufman and Killen to assist us with the 4A Corporation. And the initial purpose will be rental contract review and update, policies and procedures update and review, and more importantly, properly development projects, legal review. So I believe Ms. Melissa Killen is here to answer any questions, and I was not here as city manager last night, but she was a city attorney at one time. She has knowledge of our city, and I think she played parts in the annexation portion and maybe also the 4A corporations. So if the council has any questions for her, I've discussed it with our legal counsel here, and he believes, as I do, that it's a good time to bring her in and assist us with the growth and the activity that was happening out of the center.
Ms. Killen, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Good evening. Thank you. If I have any questions, just to let the members know, the firm does engage a lot of economic development activities, representing developers, big box retail, cities, economic corporations, et cetera. I was the attorney previously, and when I left, Mr. Rosenberg came on the board, and I've worked with him well in the past. At the time, I think Andy was over at the department. So we're happy to be here. Like I said, we have different teams in the economic development, from both sides of the city, aside from the developer side.
And you're very committed with the site. I believe we used your firm to do the?
We actually did a certification of purchase and review in the civic center. I understand the recall is favored that there is activity on the site right of the possibly court complex, and we're actually doing a base court complex as a consultant, having local rubber marks right there, and the property of the mission. I really believe that all of that is just a great community happening, and saving the people forward, and the 4A board, I'm sure they just would get going on something. They continue all of the work of the council, starting with the community of the 4A.
Mayor, in addition, I wanted to just acknowledge that Marketing Director Carolyn Palacios is also in the audience, and I have visited with her in regards to the assistance on the rental contract reviews and updates and policies and procedures, and she's here for any questions. And she was very receptive, knowing that's something that we need to address first.
I'll ask President Gleason if he has any comments or any questions, or?
I support the point of, since Mr. Berger resigned, we have been without. And I think it's very important that we fill out the schedule.
Carolyn?
I agree, and I worked with, I was here for a short time in Los Angeles with the attorney, and I'm confident that it could benefit from a little more.
We'll further the discussion of counting. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I just want to say that it's about time that we move forward. I know that we've had an uphill battle the last couple of years, and for the first time we've actually positive as far as the civic's concerned or the event center. I know that it's been said here, it's not going anywhere, and for us to move forward in a positive manner as opposed to having all this negativity is important. And setting the foundation as far as policies and procedures are concerned is relevant to that firm. Mr. Gleason, Carolyn, and everyone else that sits on that board needs all the help we can get. As you acknowledge the fact that we are moving positive, we're going forward, and we have a lot of activity coming in the next year. And if we can show that we can hold these events and prosper, then our city will prosper with it. Okay?
Your honor, I might add, in the past, one of the big problems that we have faced has been the contracting of the building, the wall, and it's a large problem. Sorry.
I really like the fact, Melissa, that you bring the level of expertise in economic development. We've been talking about Florisville being a destination city and that part of the town being a focus, where we have the event center, we have the river, we have Las Ganas. Now, if we develop this the right way with a plan, I think this could really bring the big industry to Florisville, a different industry to Florisville. So is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the authorization of the city manager to retain the law offices Kaufman and Killen Incorporated as attorney for the 4A Corporation.
I second. We should, by Gomez, second by Flores, to retain the law office of Kaufman and Killen as attorney for the 4A Corporation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by zero. Congratulations, and welcome aboard. Item 5B, consideration and actually consider and adopt the manager's city organizational chart, which is in your package, council. Let's take a moment to review this, please.
Yes, Mayor.
Is that, are we going to fill that position?
That's on there right now, that's, that'll be in the future of what we're planning to do if the council comes up with, it has to be approved by the council at that point in time, which we had said 90 to 180 days, first quarter to second quarter, depending on what comes up after the review of job descriptions and everything else that's included. Those are two separate positions that we're planning on.
Mr. Mayor, if I might address maybe just a little bit, there were two steps to take place at your January council meeting. One is job descriptions, there was a requirement for a review of all positions, and part of that is another look at the organization chart at the same time. And I think that's scheduled tentatively for the 12th of January as a scheduled follow-through on the manager's contract as part of the performance review for the nine to ten period. And I think we set the deadline, Ms. Castillo, from 12 to maybe 11:00. But I think all three of those boxes are set for the same year.
Yes, that is correct. And I think after the evaluation is completed regarding the H R policies and procedures, then we will decide after all the updates have been made, if we still need a H R director.
That's correct.
So this is really, my point is, this is an interim item, carries us through the first month of this.
Do we need to put him on the chart at this point, then?
Yes, because it is a budgeted item, and just to alleviate, if the council decides to go in that direction, then we'll just adopt, remain what we've got, if not, then that's when the adjustments will be made. Because inclusive of that, also the Human Resource position is next to the municipal judge, the court secretary, which is another position that's tentative depending on the second quarter. One for the street department is also included in there, and one for the wastewater. So those are, all those positions, as we said before, are on the board chart, but are not filled and will not be filled till the council approves it after the second quarter, or when the council decides.
Actually, I'm asked to fold that, and then we can go over there. They can always go and get it off the chart.
That's correct. Any other discussion?
May I make a motion to adopt the manager's city organizational chart?
I second.
Motion by Castillo, second by Castillo to approve the organizational chart as presented. All in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor, before the battle's concluded, I suggest that that be with the understanding those two positions remain open until January, just for the minute.
Including the H R director?
There's four. There's an A, B, C, and a F. A part-time municipal board clerk, one for the wastewater, and one for the streets.
Will you agree with that?
Yes.
Can we go and have that reflected on the minutes, Margaret? Item 5C, consideration and action to advise and or ratify the city's personal handbook?
Mayor, excuse us?
Yes. Yes.
We need to go ahead and take the question out.
Good question.
Did you take a vote on that?
Yes.
Actually, I'm just...
Go ahead, dear. We do the board.
Yes.
We'll be able to do off the curve.
Consideration to actually revise and or ratify the city's personal handbook with revisions to section eleven dot zero one and not eleven dot zero two. And which are what?
The revisions, I have a copy. You should have a copy. You're accurate in that. Uh, Ms. Palack has taken that to you, sir. On eleven point zero one, rules of conduct, the amendment to that portion states, generally, the concept of progressive discipline will be employed, but such policy shall be administered progressively with respect to severity of infraction and shall not operate to require incremental discipline as a limit on supervisors or managers for a particularly severe omission or commission. That's eleven, uh, point zero one. The addendum to eleven point zero two states at the bottom confidential. All matters pertaining to being confidential and are not subject to the open records provision.
And, uh, if I may say, I think this is a very important step. I don't mean to share with you the, uh, some of these things through our handbook. And this is actually very important here.
Because here, the, uh, the item eleven one and what's contained in the amendments are only a very small part of the handbook. And I handed Ms. Castillo the rest of the handbook. Part of the process between now and January is to look at the entire handbook after tonight's meeting and the formal designation of the designated, uh, Human Resources person that's going to be acting in that capacity on a part-time basis between now and January. But we do want to present you with revised book or at least a review of the book as part of the process in January. So, tonight's motion is to adopt these as specific amendments to the existing handbook that's been on record since two thousand and two.
Any discussion, council, on the... Confirmed changes in the personnel policy?
I don't want my motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve, uh, the sections eleven point oh one and eleven point oh two of the city's personal handbook as revised.
I second.
Motion by Castillo, second by Gomez, to accept the revisions, the personal handbook regarding section eleven dot zero one, zero one, and eleven dot zero two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On close, motion carries five zero. Item five B consideration, action of improvement manager's recommendation designation of Human Resource Director.
Mayor, I'd like to spend some time on this. Explain it to the council and to the citizens, please. This action item is not to hire an employee. It's not to compensate additionally the existing employees that I will mention. And it's not a, a formal designation of a Human Resource Director. It is who will be conducting, uh, what, uh, job functions for the next ninety days like we had said. Ms., our city secretary, Margaret DeHoyas, currently does compensation and benefits and will continue to do compensation and benefits for the employees. The, uh, designation of the other duties that are coming up will be for Sheri Pollak, who is a constituent liaison, and I will read, uh, constituent liaison's duties and responsibilities according to her job description currently. Performs a variety of research, investigative, and analytical projects along with required correspondence, draft, and other written work. That's what she will be doing according to the city manager's duties, goals, and objectives. The council stated, with council authorization, and that's why we're here, the individual who has HR administrative authority will evaluate the city's employment practices, policies, procedures, job descriptions, salary ranges, and any other HR practices that need revision within the first quarter of this contract. The council will determine at that completion of this evaluation if we need to fund and create a full-time HR position or continue with the individual who has been given HR authority to implement HR policies and procedures. So, what Sheri Pollak will be doing is going to be doing research on all the, uh, the items that I just mentioned. I have sat down with our city secretary and I have sat down with Mrs. Pollak. And they have agreed to take on these responsibilities, like I said, and no additional compensation or no official Human Resource Director title.
I agree.
Go ahead.
There is one caveat in that explanation that needs to be clear. And Ms. Castillo, don't tell me this if I don't. The one important caveat is, is that for purposes of progressive discipline or for purposes of an investigation and disciplinary action, the person that the manager's recommending be designated tonight would commence the investigative process. And through what you've just adopted in eleven dot one and eleven dot two, it ends at the manager instead of, as it has been, starts with the manager. So, Ms. Palak would have the additional duties in that explanation in this interim ninety day period of commencing any investigation concerning any disciplinary matter that came before the city staff. And she would be the one making the recommendation upon completion of the investigation to the manager. And then it'd be the manager to take action. And that comports with, A, the explanation the manager just gave, and B, what she just adopted on eleven one and eleven two. And so, I need to put that extra piece in there because she's not only going to make recommendations, but she's actually, if there is a disciplinary matter, she will be the investigating officer. Did I say that right?
That is correct. And I just want to make sure that the employees that are here acknowledge that they approve of that or disapprove of that for the council and the citizens.
Ms. you, Ms. you, I did say that right, correct?
Yes, you did. As a matter of fact, we need to change the way the item on the agenda is written because it is not designating someone as a Human Resource Director but as an HR administrative with authority to do the job. That we need done in the first quarter.
As an additional duty.
Exactly. In, in addition, the investigation progressive discipline matter. Is that...
That's what I'd like for the motion to say, and I agree with you.
Okay.
And why don't I, I just want to be on a positive note. I just want to, uh, say thank you for taking some of these, you know, these delegations give you all these different duties. And, you know, I know for, um, the city secretary for herself, it's going to be a handful of information to get done before January. But, uh, again, we're setting a standard, a new standard for the policy procedures and employees. So, it's, uh, it's a positive.
Yes, I would like to, um, make a motion. Um, I move that we appoint Sheri Pollak to take on the HR administrative authorities, evaluating the city's employment practices, policy procedures, job descriptions, salary ranges, and any other HR practices that need revision to include the authority of, um, of managing the investigation progressive discipline manager, manager. Is that sufficient?
I think that's sufficient for purposes of implementing, you know, I think one on one and one point oh two is a good enough.
I second that.
Motion by Castillo, second by, by Gomez. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
One more comment, Mayor, before we move on, just for the record. The city secretary, Margaret DeHoyas, and I are pretty much a team, uh, running the city. And I need her with additional to, her duties to assist me. And that's why this is going to take a lot of time, uh, to review and research. And I believe that Mrs. Pollak would have more time than, uh, than our city secretary at this point in time to do that.
But she will need the benefits and compensation.
Yes, compensation and benefits. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, council. We need to schedule a meeting for November. Would you prefer the tenth or the seventeenth? Or Margaret, give us two choices.
Recommend the seventeenth if it's possible because that'd be a finished vessel and fix the city on the, uh, dancing dance.
Will you make a motion to that, Mario? Mario makes a motion to the seventeenth. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Flores. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, Mayor, council, thank you, uh, for allowing us some time to do my manager's report. The citizens of Florida as well. Uh, we'll be, uh, reporting on, uh, several items today that required, uh, or asked for by several of the council members. First, it'll be reports on roads. Uh, if you can shut up that light, council member, please. Thank you. Continue of road projects that we've done. I've done a presentation to, uh, the citizens and council last time in regards to the items in yellow. And please forgive me for what we've got to work with. But that's what we're going for right now. Once we get more like that, uh, that'll improve. The council has one, and, uh, the citizens do also. We did seal coat projects after the paving projects that we had reported on the, the last little round. Long Bridge Heights subdivision. I didn't know it was called, uh, Long Bridge Heights. I thought it was just Long Bridge. But I found something out. We've done Long Bridge, uh, the road, eight hundred and seventy-seven feet. Long Branch, five hundred and seventy-eight feet. Long Leaf, five hundred and eighty-eight feet. Long Horn, thirteen hundred and seven feet. And Long Field, seven hundred and fifty-seven feet for a total of four thousand one hundred and seven feet by forty-two inches wide. And that's just a picture of, of the process that they go through. They, uh, they clean the streets. They clean the, uh, the curving area, the size of the road. They lay down oil. They throw down the, uh, the gravel. And then they go back and seal coat it with, uh, with oil. So, that's one of the projects that Rudy, uh, Vazquez and the street department has completed since my last presentation. Move on, please. Seal coat project East, East Heights, which is, I'm sorry, real quick. This was the, uh, the one that we just did previously. This, uh, area up here, the one that we're talking to, or down here. Seal coat project, East Heights, G Street, six hundred and nineteen feet. Eighth Street, nine hundred and forty-three feet. J Street, thirteen hundred and thirty-seven feet. Eighth Street, three hundred and thirty-nine feet. Ninth Street, six hundred and eighty-seven feet. And Sixth Street, seven hundred and seventeen feet for a total of four thousand six hundred and forty-two feet by twenty-two inches wide. These are seal coat projects also to, uh, maintain the roads that we've got and just improve the area, uh, at minimal cost, which is still...
Twenty-two feet, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, twenty-two feet. Uh, thank, thank you. You made them laugh. The speed bumps is another, uh, project that the council this year has asked for us to look into. We've got three locations that we have, uh, put the speed bumps at. Nine Hundred Block of Plum Street, Twelve Hundred Block of Plum Street, and A Street at the date here. Each, uh, area, if you look up at the screen if you can, takes several components. The speed bump or hump, as you may, uh, see on the presentation. There has to be signed at each actual location prior to that, uh, you let the public know caution. Speed bumps ahead, and some of them have slow children playing. So, those have worked out. We've been, uh, we've got real good comments, feedbacks from the citizens in those areas. Uh, so good that we constantly get calls, or, or Ms. Castillo constantly gets calls of other areas that we may need to put those on. So, move on, people. Upcoming projects. These are, uh, several projects that we are trying to finish at the end of twenty-eleven before the cold weather, as Rudy states. Uh, it's not a good time to pave or seal coat once it gets a little too cold. So, South Third Street, we had looked at this area. It's off of, uh, of course, South Second area, which was totally redone. Uh, we've got a lot of drainage issues that go down there. This road had pretty much dissolved. And, uh, we have gotten some calls from, uh, some handicap residents in that area that wanted that, uh, area fixed. We went and evaluated and said, well, if we can knock it out in twenty-eleven before we, uh, get into our bid process in twenty-twelve, we'll do that. What's that going to require? We're going to go and replace the water lines while we're there to make sure that we don't have to come and fix any leaks after we, uh, fix those roads. We're going to do curving, the road replacement. And then we're going to do some drainage work out there. The riprap drainage, if you can see the, uh, the, uh, pipes there that come out of there, uh, pretty much do a lot of damage to the area. So, we're going to go ahead and concrete, do some riprap, and get that water out of there as quick as possible. Go ahead. Another area that we looked at, we've got a very, very nice home at the end of E Street. Several homes that are, are pretty decent up there that will bring some more taxable value to the city. That really didn't have a road at all. It, it was a road. The, uh, streets were, uh, the trash service, the, uh, the water utilities, uh, the wastewater, all of that was in there, but the road was pretty bad. So, we decided to try to finish this small project before the end of twenty-eleven. E Street, extension of street to allow access to the new home and other homes that are in that area. So, I think that's one of the older parts of Florida, which is South Second, South Third, South Fourth there. We're going to address all those issues eventually. We wanted to, uh, get this part and get that water out of there before we started. Go ahead. Gas franchise matter is another report that I've got for you. Lou Rosenberg, our city attorney, and I have been working on the matter of, uh, the gas franchise. We've had some, uh, some pretty bad explosions in the county area. We've been very fortunate that the city has not encountered that. But in order to, uh, to be ahead of, of any issues up there, uh, let, uh...
Our city attorney, excuse me?
Drafted a letter, reviewed it, and, uh, signed it. And we sent it off to Center Point Energy on an open record request, requesting to know where all the, uh, gas lines are within the city so we can be ahead of the game on that. Uh, we sent them the, uh, case that twelve story on the pipeline explosion which happened, I guess, west, east of town towards the Stockdale area. So, I just wanted to let the council know on that one. Assignment of surveyors, as we were talking earlier about annexation. We're going to start doing the annexation, moving on the annexation for the recreational corridor, as Lou famously named it, that, uh, is ninety-seven all the way to the River Park. We're receiving two RFQs. The council approved both. Uh, so, she allies with the Burri and Partners and Jones and Carter surveyors. And tonight, I wanted to let you know that you approved both. We're going to go and move with Burri and Partners, which is somebody that has done the preliminary work, has, uh, let us know pretty much, uh, where and what it's going to take to annex it. So, we feel that that'll be the quickest and the cheapest way to get that, uh, taken care of on our twenty-twelve timeline. City's master plan and RFQ, another, uh, golden objective the council has, uh, asked me to accomplish this next year. Uh, Lou and I work on, uh, request for qualifications on engineers. He put it in which area?
It's in the commercial recorder.
Commercial recorder. He said that's where the, uh, the engineer surveyors go. We wanted to make sure we, uh, got the, uh, the best qualified engineer to help us do that. Our master plan, we've got a ten-year master plan for our water. We've got a ten-year master plan for our wastewater. We've got, uh, a, uh, ten-year master plan for our roads. We don't have anything for parks. We don't have anything for planning and zoning. And we're going to try to wrap all of those up. Uh, and with what we got, it should, uh, limit our cost of compiling everything. What I would really like to do, Mayor and council, is to involve the public as much as possible. We'd like to have some, uh, public units to come in and say, how do you want our city to grow? What's the best way that you're going to feel comfortable with? So, we're going to, uh, whoever we choose eventually, uh, that's going to be one of my requests, uh, to let them know we need the public's input on how we need to grow our city. That's just a, uh, copy of what was put in the paper. And, uh, all proposals must be submitted twelve P M noon Thursday, November third, twenty-eleven, and should be addressed to City of Florida, thanks to Ms. Margaret DeHoyas, city secretary. Go ahead. Time to work it. I want to let Lou talk a little bit about this. Uh, it's in our budget. We had said, hold on and see what, uh, what we can come up with. We still get calls from the rep, the services needed within the city buildings, the, uh, event center, and then of course, our police department. He said, if we're not going to go out and try to sell it to the public at this point in time, we could scale that down, uh, bring our costs down, and it'll be a continued progress. He said, we can give the service now with the capability if we... He said, we can give the service now with the capability, if we decide later and we get through whatever loopholes we have to get through, that we may be able to provide it. But it's still something that I'm very interested in, something that I think would enhance our services here at the event center and help us move forward. But Lou, do you have anything on that, sir?
Just one piece of background, when we rented out the municipal building next door, and they decided to vacate, their complaint was that they didn't have adequate internet and technology available to them. And so Time Warner came down here, as most of you know, Time Warner put the cable in to service the school district, and since then, they've added, they've connected to Phelps, they've connected also to the hospital district, but they've still got a great deal of capacity available. So they've been wanting to provide that service to the city, and we wanted in turn to make that available to the people that are renting your space from you here, because there's a great demand for high-density title work that requires big piles of paper to be sent off electronically. But at this point, because of the issue of, there's two cases, one out of Missouri and one out of Texas, that have raised questions about the providers competing against each other. And so at this point, we're recommending the council simply authorize the manager to proceed with Time Warner to provide services for the city and the city alderman. At some point, I think it's gonna be appropriate for us to approach you, Mr. Mayor, in your other hat capacity with Phelps, to determine whether Phelps is the appropriate way to enhance Time Warner's delivery of services, or how we should go from there to provide a broader swath of service to the community, particularly the business community. But immediately, we wanna try to take care of the city's needs for its departments. And that does include the civic center and any entities that would be using the civic center for enhancing its opportunities there. So Mr. Jocelyn and his staff, and I think particularly Ms. Pollack, are gonna be involved in trying to size the needs and Time Warner's capacity. George Gonzalez has dogged us now for at least once a week for about six months, and he's ready to try and put some sizing and some costs together. And there is money, as Mr. Jocelyn has indicated in the budget, for what you need for yourself.
So, Mr. Rosenberg, do you think that the cost is going to change? Because it was a five-year contract with fixed number for each building. So is that going to change, or is it approximately the same cost?
No, I think that's gonna change significantly. What is the tell?
Yeah, it'll change significantly because the size that we're gonna be going down to is gonna be downgraded with the capacity that if we wanted to in the future add on to, we would have that capability, but what we're purchasing now, the size width would go down. We were originally looking at purchasing a hundred megabits, which we're no longer gonna need a hundred megabits if we're not gonna be selling it. So that cost will come down significantly. At this point, we've just been in contact with Time Warner, there is no contract on the table at this point. We would have to go back to them and tell them, again, sizing down to the need that we would want, and they would give us pricing at that point.
So is franchising out of the question?
For tonight?
The other concern that we kind of, the time we discussed it was whether it was compatible or not the infrastructure. At the scaled downside, it would be yes. And I think we ought to pursue it because it's really critical, everyone has to work with change.
And that was her main concern, was we didn't want to inherit it and then have the problem where we had to-
Re-do the idea.
Yeah, actually spend monies on technology.
Absolutely. The downgraded side, we would work with Time Warner on that to verify that for sure. But through our discussions, the downgraded side, we would be able to use our existing equipment. Thank you.
And last but not least, if you can move to the sports complex, and I'm glad that our new attorney for the four A board is here, just so she can have an update. John Longoria was the consultant that was hired for this portion. He has met with the following groups, Little League softball and baseball, Wildcats football, Boys and Girls Club of Wilson County, and Wilson County Soccer, for soccer. I believe he's had two meetings with him. Ms. Pollack has been in contact with him. Working on a summary of the project, which I believe will be delivered at the November meeting. He will be here to present that to the council. Field layouts, need to monster system funding, and funding suggestions will be the topics that we're bringing to the council. So he is staying up to date. He has visited with the league. He has come up with some ideas and some suggestions and some requests from the league, so that'll be later date. I just wanted to give you an update on that, and we will put you in contact with him if that's something that you wanna do at this point in time. Okay, one last thing, our city attorney wanted me to inform the council and then the citizens. We have had contractors or companies come up and ask us to sell our floodwater, our wastewater, like some of the other cities have done. And just for the sake of legality, our city attorney went ahead and advertised that in the paper also. It's gonna be advertised, and we're gonna give it the legal time before we make a decision. Once we come up with that, we'll bring it to the citizens. But it's something that we've been working on for some time now. Because of our home rule status, we have to go a little further than some of the surrounding cities who have moved on that very quickly.
I know that when we went to that conference, when we asked some questions about that, I was pretty, I was freaking out because I didn't realize you could sell wastewater.
Not only can you sell it, but you do have to get approval to do it from the commission. Because normally, they're thinking this is surface water, and surface water, they want to come back into the existing stream. Your water is private water because it comes from the underground, but that's not the issue. There is a specific reuse rule, thirty Texas Administrative Code two-ten, and it requires approval. We talked to the regional office in San Antonio, which is Region thirteen, and we specifically indicated what we're doing. And we structured the request for proposal to come back if you, to give you about three million dollars worth of insurance, because I don't want to see the city be on the receiving end of a fracking issue. Number two, we've also specified that you'll place your judgment on quantity, cost, and length of duration of the contract. And the other thing we're concerned about is, is when they look at the treatment plant to assess the issue of changing water to reuse, because that's what it will be called for purposes of administrative review. They're gonna look at your plant, and Larry Hymer's plugged into this, so that plant-wise, we make sure that whoever takes the water and wherever they take it, your plant's protected, and your plant has adequate facility for what we're talking about here for selling the water. Okay? But it should give you a revenue stream. It depends on the location, but some of the water is going at eight cents a barrel, which is forty-two gallons, and some places it's going as high as seventy-five cents a barrel for forty-two gallons. So depending on what range it is and how long the time is and so forth, that's a potential source to use to reinvest in your sewer system.
Lou, there's those requirements, with the Evergreen offer, anything from them?
No, not at this point, because you're not taking additional water out of the offer for the water that's already permitted.
But it won't stay?
Well, what your purveyor does with it is another issue that needs to be addressed by the Evergreen, but that's not the part we're looking for. The reason I mentioned the insurance and the indemnity is, is because I can see these fracking projects coming backwards up to where the water comes from, and trying to put the provisions in there and the cost burden in there for the person or the entity that takes it from you, to make sure you're indemnified and you're not at the tail end of somebody's loss.
Thank you.
And one last thing, Mayor, I always say one last thing, but this is the last one. And this deals with the human resource issue. On the contract, one of the stipulations on there, ongoing, it says, "Encourage teamwork across all departments and recognize staff members who exceed teamwork criteria, enhance existing or create guideline principles to acknowledge employee of the month for exceeding job performance." And we have one of the plaques that we're gonna get, and this is gonna be already done where it says, "Florisville Employee of the Month." But before we start that, we wanted to do an employee of the year in addition, and we wanted to start effective this past year, 2010, 2011. And I'm gonna read a couple of the highlights from the office of Cindy Nichols. Laquinda Page, we're building permits, working on redesign for the layout to accommodate Phelps requirements. Eagle Ford Inn, which is the one next to the Best Western, working on completing the project. Working with Raul Gonzalez on the grant for the water and sewer studies, or that he did come in, we did supply him with all of that, and he's gonna get that in the next couple of months. Working with planning and zoning to get a list of qualifications, of firms to work on the comprehensive plan, which we discussed earlier. Working on application to establish RV parks. Working on application to rezone property, properties according to the master plan. Working with applicants to establish lodges in various areas in Florisville. Passed or certified floodplain manager, which is something only engineers, primarily engineers do. Completed Walmart project, worked at P&amp;G to develop on implementing new RV trailer park ordinance, working on a new project for a gas station at the Walmart, new Walmart, working on a code compliance program to keep Florisville clean. Over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue. One person without the experience in that position, our public works director retired, and she didn't miss a beat. So, Ms. Cindy Nichols. That is our 2010, 2011 employee of the year. Cindy, why don't y'all take the picture? The council, please, with our employee. Do you want to just step up to the back? It'll work out.
That was creepy, Cindy.
Congratulations, Margaret. Awesome. It's okay. Before, I guess we go on, I just wanna make, say something real fast. I wanna comment on how everything that's positive gets lost in the shuffle. You know, we come out here and we show everything that we've worked on this year, and it's amazing how fast and how well we worked. You know, I can't do it, he can't do it, we all do it together. And I wanna say it's a positive thing for Florisville, very positive, very positive. And I will stick and we will keep on going forward. I wanna make that statement because lately, we're getting stuck in the eye, and I'm gonna tell you right now, we're going forward. Very positive. Awesome, awesome. Beautiful job. Everybody, employees, council, everybody, love it.
Cindy, you wanna say something?
I do, Mayor. I'm very humbled and very thankful. I just want y'all to know that even with everything that's shooting at and hitting us, with God's blessing, with his work, I will continue to do the best to my, the best of my ability to keep this going, to take our city to more positive, more clean. I will do everything I can in my power with the people that we have, who are a great bunch of people. I didn't do this on my own, it was with a tremendous group effort. We have a really good team in our, in our, in our city. The parks, the sewer guys, the water guys, they're, everybody's great. The girls in the front, Cindy, my city, everybody, you know? And I wanna thank everybody for helping me, because it was scary, you know, taking this on my own, but I wanna thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Um, Mayor, I just wanna thank the staff for taking, making a dent in that long list of golden objectives. You've really done a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Now you know that's your next project, Mayor.
All right, Andy, Department of Florisville, four A board members, we have a couple of resignations?
We do, and I would like the four A board president to just come up and say a couple of words on that.
Okay.
And I know that he's got some quite tricky expectations that he would like on new board members.
Mr. Reese, how are you doing?
I'm excellent. And yet again. We have, one of the main problems with four A board has been trouble. We have had people come and go, and people that we were really excited about leave the board for various reasons. Same thing with, has to, people are less important. I think one of the things that we need to do a more intense job is to explain to the people before they come on what the job entails. We also need to let them know about the DABC requirements. That has been a sticking point with some of the people, when they did not want to put the name on the DABC license. And it's not, the board's duties have changed a little bit throughout the period of time, and I think we just need to spend some time letting the people know before they say, I'm gonna take this job, letting them know what the job entails and what is required in that, in those positions. Because I feel like the comment that I've gotten from several members, well, they didn't know that they had to sign the home license. They didn't know they had to go to a background and check on that, and stuff like that. And I think we need to, as truthfully as, when I was appointed, I didn't know that either. We hadn't even applied for a license yet, and I haven't taken that real estate. I just believe that that is something that we need to be very careful about, to make sure that the people know what they're getting into. I think also that we try to look for people who have something to bring to the table, knowledge and expertise in certain areas such as business or marketing, or people who have experience in those areas. I think would be a tremendous asset to the board. And that does not mean that I'm trying to be an exclusive entity or anything like that, but there are business people that have, there are people who have all sorts of talents in this community that we can access and tap into. And when we appoint people to these boards, we've had some very good people on these boards. I hate to lose the two that we lost. But I think that we need to look into that type of, those two items when we appoint more members, not just because they're a real ass guy or they, you know, they're really interested. That's good. We want people who are really interested, we want people who are bright people, but we need to tell them what they're getting into. And I think that would help us a lot.
Yeah, I think another reason people might be hesitant and wanting to volunteer is exactly what Mr. Gomez was talking about, the negative perception that some people in our community create. Perception that have no bearing, no foundation whatsoever for them to be out there.
But that's, but that's why we're bringing in tools for that, starting with an attorney. Maybe set certain standards that you can put in the paper and ask your people, we're looking for.
And I agree with you, Councilman. I think that those are, there are certainly things that, you know, nobody likes to have their name in the public view in a negative way. You wanna be positive and proud of what you're doing. And so I think that is certainly something that needs to be put there, too.
We'll keep on plugging away.
And we acknowledge the job that you're doing, and it's coming.
I appreciate, we do still have a form of award that will be given.
We have a beautiful vision- We have a beautiful building that people are out there, we're gonna keep on developing.
Not like to break this down, uh, just a little bit, because no one knows the number of hours they put in out there. And they do everything from mop the floors, to clean the toilets, to whatever has to be done. And they don't get a huge salary for the hours that they put in. And, uh, I think that, uh, they should be commended, and I am very proud of them, and, uh, at this point. And that's gonna bring me to my next point later on. I'm gonna be coming to you to see if we can increase my staff, but the only way we can grow the center is to grow the staff.
And that's, uh, that's where we're headed. But, uh, on that note, um, you might wanna give us a criteria, make a sit with Jocelyn, sit with their attorney, sit with the mayor, sit with any councilman here, and give us some type of criteria that you're actually looking for. The unfortunate thing is that we can't use, I think in the 4A, it's city only, right? Is that correct?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, sir.
Can we look into that? Because I'll tell you what, there's people outside of the city that might have some type of reinforcement for the 4A, for the 4A Board towards the event center, and, I don't know, maybe we can change some things that way. But if it's a criteria that we're looking at and it's a rule, we follow it. If not, hey, you know what, maybe we can find something else.
And, you know, I, I just wanna stress, I don't wanna make this for Oakland to, to, I'm not trying to make it an exclusive thing. But there are people who have certain, uh, skills that really could enhance our, our knowledge and things like that.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Gleason?
You don't even got an age limit. I have no age limit, I see you every morning.
Mr. Gleason, we have an, an application on the website, and I think we also have some right here, don't be curious.
Yes, yes.
And, um...
I think that's a great idea.
But what we need with it, as I hear you, is a volunteer job description for our 4A.
Right.
So if we could have that, then maybe we could put that on the website also.
I'll, I'll certainly try to work with, uh, City Manager to do that. City Manager has, uh, done a great job, and he's, he got in probably once or twice a week, maybe even one more often in the last while. Uh, but he's been, he's been a lot of help, and he may, he'll, my employees may be too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason.
Can I open the same thing with the Parks Foundation, Andy?
Uh, yes, sir, if, uh, you're following, just address that real quick. She has been working with the League that are gonna be participating in the sports complex venture and stuff. So I think she's got some names or some applications that we may wanna consider. This is just discussion only.
Okay, how many people do we have, uh, we need to be filled?
Uh, we gotta go up to, I think that was up to fifteen members if you read them, but each council member should appoint one.
Well, I think the voting members is just the members of the council.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the rest are just advisory members?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, in, in the sports complex communications that we've had with John Monroy, one of the things that they've said is they want to be more involved in, in what happens even if the current buildings are out there. And so what I offered to them, and I did get a couple of, of names back today that I'll be happy to share with you. Um, Gwen Hopkins with the Little League, I'll start by giving you some names this week, and if they come in, I'll forward them to you all so that you can speak with them. Uh, but they are interested in, in doing what they can to sit on these boards to be able to get the Parks Foundation moving and rolling in the right direction. Um, so that they can keep the parks up and usable, and you can have agreements where the Wildcats and the Little League aren't arguing over what build is whose and those kinds of things. So here's a couple of them here, again, this is just the beginning, and we'll be getting some more in. What I have explained to them is that you all may be contacting them and discussing what would be expected of them if they do decide to take a seat on the board. So hopefully that'll alleviate some of the turnover that we have so far.
So that means we also have to do a volunteer job description for that provision?
Yes, and we'll, we'll work on that as well.
And again, the policies are out in the open, I don't, we don't have anything in place for that. Um, I know that, uh, there was, there's been a lot of, uh, positive going as far as that's concerned. And we can, you know, encourage some of the board members from the, uh, different associations to be involved. I know we got some coaches that wanna be involved, of course, as Sherry stated not so long ago, you know, they're very involved right now in football. Two of those people are acting, running football, so they're like, you know, just let us know, try to figure out some way to be there. Um, so they're, it's, it's very positive as far as that's concerned. Is there a deadline for these? I mean, is, are we looking for a certain deadline for both? I know that, uh, having a turnover rate really takes away from your, from, you know, building a strong foundation. So I think maybe we'll do maybe a deadline if you all want to.
I, I think we should decide by end of the year at least.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, installation of speed bumps?
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, John Guerrero has been working very hard with the public. Um, we didn't designate him for it, but somehow they designated for him. We've looked at, uh, uh, I know, uh, we looked at different avenues, uh, different streets. Uh, we get calls from different people in our city. I know that I've been observing traffic lately, um, not only in our school zones, but certain streets where it's being redirected because of traffic. Uh, for instance, I think I got a call from, uh, Matthew Lossick. Um, he's talking about, and I see where he's talking, um, what happens is the truck, all the truck traffic sits on 181 at that stop. So what they're doing is all these people are peeling out, coming down the Dairy Queen Road, which is, uh, what's that happening here? What road is that?
Z, I don't know.
Actually, yes, actually down, uh, that road, there's a dip, but they, they really speed through there. And what's happening is people are trying to beat the traffic from the trucks, 'cause you sit behind them for a while. So they're making that an extra, you know? Thing is, that's a public road, it's not more of a highway. So my truck route, as you'll see, is, uh, an important phase to what we need to do here. But that's gonna need a street, a, 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 they're asking for a speed bump. I know that it's a, a very good place to do it because it's not, you can't really monitor that. Um, I think we're more monitoring the highways, byways, ninety-seven, the streets, stuff like that. So I think, uh, that would be a very important one that we need to look at. Um, before we do that, I know that I've gotten some calls where they put speed bumps and some citizens are, are, uh, upset because they did put a speed bump. Um, I don't mention his name, but, uh, I'm pretty sure he called you guys. Uh, if we can, let the public know. If you're gonna go on that street, let the public know. Be diplomatic about it, maybe get a, you know, just ask them, do you mind, do you think? You know, just kinda give them a heads up. Eventually, the decision's made, I said, by our city manager or our streets product, I, we don't make that decision. We let, leave that up to him. But we do bring up some situations and we do talk about it. Um, one of the other places, um, as far as speed bumps are concerned, is, um... If they give you one, what was that, I called you on that one, Jocelyn, or was it, do you, Sherry, I think you were looking at a couple?
I've had all the speed bumps installed.
Oh, okay.
Well, Andy, once we've called.
Correct.
Andy, that one, that one that you showed on the illustration there, I saw that the sign saying speed bump was right over the bump on the side.
Shouldn't it be? There's, there's two on each end saying speed bump ahead, and then one on each side of the speed bump itself.
There's actually a picture of it, uh, there is speed bump.
And then there's another speed bump right there.
It's in your packet, if you leave your packet, uh, it's actually there, and it says caution, speed bump ahead, and then speed bump is on the other side of there. So all that. The other thing, aren't there regulations that you have to comply with so we cannot install them just because people want in there? Is that correct?
Um, and that's one reason is why we de-designate or delegate that. Uh, the other thing is there's another light, but, uh, I'll get that with, back to you on that. But just to give you a heads up, I don't know, do you have one?
No. Did you wanna talk about the speed limit lights?
Yeah, there's another situation where I'm having, we're having a, like I said, we monitor mostly the highways, ninety-seven, as far as, uh, the, uh, speed limit lights are concerned, um, uh, during the middle school. But I'll tell you what, I sat with a couple of people on that road, and I know we have a dip there, but it doesn't stop people from speeding. The problem with that is that we have individuals or school people or school students walking down those streets. I know we tried to put a crosswalk there, uh, I looked at that, no sticks, we put a, we put, we designated lines, we've, uh, put slowed, slowed down for children or, you know, we put signs, but it's not working. So my main concern is their safety. Uh, the problem is that people don't, what happens is that they don't pay attention to it, period. So I made a, I de, I, I delegated something to, uh, Mr. Jocelyn, I think I talked to John and Sherry and Chris and, and, uh, and we, I was trying to designate some type of speed limit sign, meaning, uh, something that's gonna flash out in front of your eyes and tell you how fast you're going down that street.
But there's a twenty miles per hour sign on that street.
Right, right, right. But this actually takes your speed limit and tells you how fast you're going. And not only that, but we reinforce not following the speed limit. I think that's what we're looking at.
And we have, uh, Councilman in your packet, uh, after this, uh, this conference that we're at, we looked at several school zone safety systems that are full power rec, have the flashing lights and then, uh, signs, and then it'll show the speed that you're traveling, so. We, uh, tried to get a price on that, but haven't received that yet. We did call this company to see more or less so the council will know what they run.
And that's not our problem, and that's actually a very positive thing, that I'm glad that y'all looked into that. Um, they do, that's one of the streets that we don't really monitor, because everyone else, if you always look on ninety-seven, there's a cop right across from, you know, right across the street, and he was watching, but it's, you know, ninety-seven's watched, and I understand, you know, they got enough to do and they got enough on their hands, but help them out a little bit, maybe we can throw them a bone, and they, you know what, we can take care of the situation. And not only that, but reinforce the fact that if you do do that, you know, there'll be some, uh, you know, things you have to pay, for sure. Um, same thing with our truck routes, I think I've been looking at truck routes. We have actually truck routes coming into our, to our city. We have trucks coming into the city. We got to, we gotta understand that because of the influx of oil...
They're using my street, E Street, you know, right here at the station, we've been on a big old truck.
And not only, that's, that's disappointing, and let me tell you why. We're just redoing these streets, that's a first thing, okay? We're putting money into these streets, the first, that's the first, my first problem. Second is, some of these trucks come with chemicals, some carry oil, some carry, and that's very displeasing to me because of the fact that they're actually involving the public. Something happens with one of those trucks, hazmat, you know what, I don't think we have any here. Probably take an hour or two to even get here, especially if it's a dis, a corrosive or whatever the, whatever it is, as far as acidic oil, whatever it is, we need to keep that and designate truck routes within our city. And if they are going in our city, make sure that our police officers are informed that there are, and I see here the traffic code, thank you. Thank you very much. And if there actually is items that prevent us, prevent them from going into our city. And the fines can be very, 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 I mean, it's imperative, these things have to happen. Um, I know, you know, we, we're trying to, uh, you know, enhance our, our piece of part and get extra players out there to help us out. So, you know what, whatever we need to do, that's important. I don't know, do we even have a, a, a truck route? We don't do, you know, 'cause I looked at, like, I mean, I would, the way they come down 181 and they go right through town. I'm thinking, what, what's that for? You know, I, I'm getting it. But we do need to maybe designate truck routes, and you wanna keep them out within the, the traffic. I don't know, you know, ask our attorney maybe to look into that. I don't know exactly what the laws are or the rules are about that, if we have to explain or, or the city has to get together. I know it's already looked into, TechStop, um, so...
Any type of impact fees on that, Lou?
Not that I know of, Mr. Mayor, but I certainly...
I mean, this is a new, new, new thing to the area, but...
Yeah, it is, and, uh, it follows on your discussion from last year, that's where I'm gonna add it.
Okay, and then the other thing was, I mean, I think, uh, Sherry and, uh, some others, we got some, uh, some, uh, information that we need some, like, right here, I think, right next to, uh, Pat Brown. Right here, I think I've seen some, a few accidents. I know Sherry, I talked to Sherry, and Sherry said she's, Ms. Castillo said she's gotten together with TechStop, and...
When are they getting back with that study?
We'll have to follow up, and they did, they're pretty tied up, so we'll follow up on them to see what, have they done the street study on ninety-seven?
Right.
East, and then this area right here.
And I, and I wanna reinforce, uh, that, that, I mean, Sherry's doing a good job as far as looking into that. And I will say that Sherry's actually been a, was a step ahead of me, she's actually, was taking care of that. And she said, I already talked to TechStop, so I'll let Sherry know of that, and that's, uh, that's, that's great. Um, you know, uh, and that's our, as far as that's concerned, you know, those are some of the issues that have come up with streets, routes, everything else. I appreciate that.
Councilman, if I may just interject to help you a little bit, I was on the Board of Directors of the Allen Area Council of Government under, um, the, uh, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and there was a study that was done by UTSA on hazmat routes and things that were done on sixty-four. If you contact an Allen Area Council of Government, they come, they have that information, they'll share it with you. Also, the University of Texas has it.
Great, great.
And San Antonio has it also.
What was that site again?
It's, uh, called Allen Area Council of Government.
Correct.
And they did a tremendous study with UTSA and some of the other, uh, engineering firms, and, um, they, they did a massive study on the hazmat studies in every half communities, and it affects, you know, some of the other municipalities, the smaller municipalities. So I will take a look at that.
Great, appreciate that, we're looking at it, we're looking for it.
The one serious caveat that we're gonna have to acknowledge is, is, and I thank you for the information, is, and I don't know if you all remember this, but the hazmat studies with the HD sign that was, you see on sixty-four and around San Antonio, that started with a lot of political pressure after that train rupture up in the middle of, um, it's not Almost Park, but it was very near Almost Park there. That started back in the days of Henry Gonzalez, and it took almost twenty years to get that done. And I think you probably can vouch for that. But here's the key point, folks, and that is, San Antonio has a circumstantial and another circumstantial. Our real dilemma is, is there's basically only one route north south through the city. And that's our, that's our tough nut to cut, and that's not a lawyer's opinion, that's just physically how trucks gotta go. There's really not an alternative except for bypass. And so what your choice really is for right now is it's either they use the main route downtown in front of the school, in front of all your businesses, or you put them on the bypass, those are really your only choices for north south.
Right, and that's, that was my main concern, was keeping my, on the highway, I mean, not in the city.
How do we avoid the residential area?
Not residential area.
Well, that's why I say, you're pretty much stuck with them on the main route, 181.
Right.
'Cause we, we don't have a, a circumstantial to route them to.
Yeah, and I was, that's, that's route that I'd rather have than take, as opposed to coming straight through town and...
181 and ninety-seven, it would be the only...
Yeah, because 181 hits every other road.
Sure.
You can't, you know, it hits, the only road it won't hit, unfortunately, is five thirty-six. And, you know, I'm thinking, because I know, there's work doing all their two men, I don't know, maybe, you know, send them down a certain road. I mean, but residential is, there's no way. I mean, I've seen, I've seen E Street, E Street, I've seen them coming down, and I'm like, where are these trucks coming from? Are they lost or, you know, but we really have to, uh, really have to, uh, make sure we map that.
Just in final discussion here, one of the reasons that you have some problem with some of the trucks is where they park at night.
Okay.
I've seen them.
Is there any other?
Well, they have a bunch of those, uh, apartments and all that, but they're all here for, it used to be right at, uh, that pizza thing right here at the end of 181, I mean, right here in town, they built a little, and that's where it would go for those drivers, so where do they park?
Well, they shouldn't have, I mean, they're parking stuff with, uh, chemicals, we need to really look at that, because I'll tell you what, it's kinda, it's a safety issue, you know, it's all. But we'll look at it, I know, like I said, it's as new to the area, as the mayor said, you know, it's, it's something we've never had to deal with, but, you know, we need to get a, a kind of a little grip on it at least for now. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I think it's part of our growth.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other items to discuss, Councilman? How about the rack here?
The last guy is...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, seven up.
Unfortunately, that's one of the issues that we don't want to talk about. I'll tell you what, I'll tell you this, I've got, we've got word, and I think that John sat with me the other day, that ISI is strongly getting ready to increase our rate. And, you know, this is another, this is just a stepping stone to reiterate to everybody how important it is for us, and we're on that, we're on that road, we're on that path, we, they went to the conference, we looked at different, I know Sherry's working very hard right now on the waste management program that we want to adopt, that we're going to allocate, we're going to try to make happen, okay? Unfortunately, with our contract, guess what? You can't say they raise it. We can ask them for a reason, I think I asked them, what's the reason? You know, they said...
Is there any other, like, the one, we had three of them when we bombed out, it wasn't renewed, and then we had to go to this one, they won't take us back? The reason I'm saying is, you know, and I know, we all know, a lot of very, very poor people, handicapped, aged, you know, very poor, I mean, if they get seven, eight hundred dollars a month, that's it for their medicine, their food, whatever else, pay their bills. This is why I'm saying that, that maybe you all have to look around a little bit more, you know?
Miss Eadie, I agree with what you said, I do. I'm behind you a hundred percent as far as that's concerned, but you've got to realize that the city isn't getting any smaller, and I feel for these people, I really do. My parents are one of them. But in reality, you know, we, as a council, as a city, as anything else, have to move forward. These things that we're getting ready to do, if there's an increase, we acknowledge the fact that we can increase and take hold of what we need to do with our own business. Meaning, if you're going to pay for something, you're going to get a better resource, as opposed to, they're just going to raise it and you're going to have the same resource. So there's some positives, and there is some negatives, but with anything that we do here, we're looking at the future of Forestville and what we need to do.
You don't have to look at different ones, not just one in the mouth, that's not right.
Ma'am?
You don't look at just one in the mouth, you have to look around and check it out, because they're not the only ones around here to pick up trash, because I've seen them going on to both and all over the place, there's different ones going. So you know darn well they might get a better degree over there, I don't know, but like I'm saying, the one you're talking about, the one now, then there one more, why not look around? We do that in our lives, all the time.
I won't, I won't comment on that certain company, because...
I don't either, I don't know.
I will say this, that we do this as, the situation that we're put in years ago, and how this contract came about, it's irrelevant right now.
I know it is, but we paid the piper, didn't we? We paid the piper, and you know it, and I know, we all know, because we felt it.
Again, it's irrelevant, all I'm going to say is this, that what we're getting ready to reinforce is looking at other avenues, not only that, but our own, and that's what's important, okay? And I'll leave it at that, I know that I wanted to relay that message, because in October, when it comes on your bill, you know what, you're going to say, well, they're keeping money in their pocket, they're getting this money, you know what, that's not the way it works, it's not the way it works. You know what, they run a business just like we do, and unfortunately, that's the business.
But they're not the only ones on the planet, mister.
Again, that's all I...
They're not the only ones, that's for darn sure.
They didn't understand that we have to be able to let this company know if they're going to go well.
Our contract expires, I believe, in September 2012.
That's correct.
Twenty twelve.
You can let them know six months before that you're going to go with them, correct?
Six months, yes.
Okay, so there are other companies being checked, because I've shared, and I talked about...
There's dozens of other traffic companies in the area.
But also with what Mr. Roman was talking about, you know, because if we're not ready to do one, we have to have some kind of background.
Yes.
But if you're being...
That's one of the reasons you started around.
All the companies are going to pay the same diesel price.
You don't buy the volleys to look around, we don't do that in our life, that's a problem.
They are, they are, they are, they are, and it's sharing has all that.
Yeah, you've got, again, y'all got to understand that all these, you know, as soon as we, that happened to us, back then, it happened to everybody. There's people right now without trash service, let me just say that, County Summit Spring. You know, it's unfortunate, you know, but let me just say this, we look at every avenue that we have. Those are being seeked, not only by what we want to establish for our own city and our own business, but we're looking at other avenues and other ways to do that. You know, let me go over it. Okay. Sherry's looking at other avenues in order to, to actually bring that to your community, okay? We're actually looking at other avenues. She's doing a great job, not only in establishing our own business, but if it doesn't pan out that way, we're looking at other people, other associations, other companies, other businesses, and that I can reinforce, okay?
Well, I want to say that in my heart, I want to thank each and every one of you all, if you all give it, that's right, it's worth every bit of it, I know a lot of people, like I said, needy, absolutely old, absolutely handicapped, they're in need, and if you can help them in two, three dollars, that would mean a lot to some of them, I mean, there's no denying it, you know and I know, no use, surely. My hope and pray that things work out.
Any other business, Andy, Lou?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, meeting's adjourned at eight thirty-seven.